Good evening and Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a restful holiday and you're excited to start another new year. This evening, I will be acting as President Pro Tem. And it is now 6:37 on Monday, January the 8th, 2024. I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education organizational meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you have your cellphones, please place them on vibrate or silence for us. The first item on the agenda is the oath of office for our newly elected board members, Mrs. Angela Knighton and Mr. Bill Spielman. Mrs. Knighton, would you please come forward so that Mr. Seymour can administer your oath of office as a new board member?
Want me to come over there?
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And that I will perform faithfully.
The duties of member.
The duties of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And here and after to be enacted.
And here and after to be enacted.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
Until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is elected.
Is elected.
And qualified.
And qualified.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you could sign up for me.
Mrs. Knighton, the Winton Woods City School Board of Education welcomes you as our newly elected board colleague.
Thank you so much.
Very welcome. Mr. Spielman, would you please come forward so that Mr. Seymour can administer your oath of office as a new board member?
I can meet you halfway.
No, don't get by.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
The duties of member.
The duties of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And here and after to be enacted.
And here and after to be enacted.
During my continuance and said office.
During my continuance and said office.
Until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
And is elected and qualified.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Spielman, the Winton Woods City School Board of Education would also like to welcome you.
Thank you.
As our newly elected board members, and again, welcome to the first of many school board meetings.
Thank you.
Now, the next item on the agenda is the roll call. So, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Knighton?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of our board president for the 2024 calendar year. Board, I will entertain a nomination at this time.
I would like to nominate Deborah Bryant for the office of president.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I declare the nomination for the board president closed. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously. As the board president pro temp, I now declare Mrs. Deborah Bryant elected president of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education for the term of one year. Mr. Seymour, would you please come forward and administer the president's oath of office?
I, I'll say aye and then you say your name.
Okay.
Aye.
Deborah Bryant.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties of president.
The duties of president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you. I would now like to turn the gavel over to Mrs. Deborah Bryant as the 2024 President of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. The next item on the agenda is the election of the board vice president for the 2024 calendar year. Board, I will entertain nominations at this time.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Brandon Smith as vice president of the Board of Education for the 2024 calendar year.
Do I have a second?
I would like to second that nomination.
The nomination has been motioned in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, there are no other nominations, I declare the nomination for board vice president closed. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. As the newly elected president of Winton Woods City School Board of Education, I now declare Mr. Brandon Smith elected vice president of the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education for the term of one year. Mr. Seymour, will you please come forward to administer the vice president's oath of office?
Aye.
Aye, Brandon Smith.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties of vice president.
The duties of vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The next item on the agenda is item 4.01, schedule of regular boards, school board meetings. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the schedule of regular board meetings as follows. 2024 Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting dates, regular meetings at 6:30 PM, location, South Campus, Lake Room, and also 147 Farragut for work sessions. The dates are listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing, now, Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, the proposal, proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, as you recall, at the October meeting, the board gave me permission to use the five-year forecast for our tax budget, which we, I prepared and submitted for your review. And for the general fund, we have approximately 61.2 million, bond retirement, 3.2 million, permanent improvement, 600,000, and classroom facilities and maintenance, 200,000. As you know, the tax budget is only for those funds which collect real estate taxes. And then the next thing that will happen is that the Hamilton County Budget Commission will approve our budget, and then in April, they will send you those effective tax rates for the tax duplicate that's approved. It's called the acceptance of the amounts and rates, and you'll see that come before you, like in April.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, adoption of the fiscal year 2025 tax budget, and the 2025 tax budget as presented. The fiscal year 2024-2025 budget is attached in the board docs.
It has been motioned.
Second, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. It's been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? I do have one question. Mr.?
Seymour?
I know, no, I was looking at this. So, Mr. Seymour, you said the Hamilton County Budget Commission is going to meet, do you know when they meet every year?
No, they have regular scheduled, I don't have their schedule in front of me, but they have regular scheduled meeting, just like the Board of Education.
Okay, and then you said in April is about the time.
That's usually about the time that the, it's not actually the Budget Commission that prepares all the effective rates, it's Department of Budget and Settlement.
Okay.
And they forward all that information for all the taxing municipalities in Hamilton County to the Budget Commission for their approval.
Okay.
So I'll file actually with Department of Budget and Settlement, and then it takes them a while to go through all the townships, cities, municipalities, and school districts in Hamilton County.
And will that include the increased tax rate that Hamilton County just put on, or the State of Ohio, for all of the municipalities across the Hamilton County area?
I can't answer that being a school district, but I would assume so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Just my random question.
But as you know, we had a, it might take a little longer this time because Hamilton County's been noted to file for an extension. As you know, we had a major reappraisal this time, and of course, you know, the effective rates, the effective tax rates will proportionately be declining so that we don't collect additional dollars.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Johnson?
Oh, Dr. Johnson, sorry. No.
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Mrs. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, the investment of inactive and interim funds. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
I'm just requesting your permission to get authorization to invest all inactive funds in the most productive method I can pursuant to Ohio Revised Code and according to board policy. And as you know, I always bring those to you for review.
Board, a motion is in order?
I'd like to move to authorize the treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds in permissible investments pursuant to board policy and the Ohio Revised Code when funds are available.
I'll second it.
Thank you, it's been motioned in second. Mr., any discussion, questions? Seeing, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, the authorization of official signatures. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion, as per the Ohio Revised Code 3313.51, request a motion to authorize the president and treasurer to be the official signatures for payments of funds for the Board of Education, and further authorize that one of the two authorized sign checks on all Board of Education accounts, and that the treasurer's signature may be a facsimile.
I'll second.
It's been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing, now, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is a resolution requesting the county auditor to make advance payment of taxes. Mr. Seymour, would you please give more details?
Yes, this is a short resolution for the board to authorize me to request from the Department of Budget and Settlement, whenever, as people pay their tax bills before the settlement date is concluded, people who have paid, I can request those funds be drawn upon up to 90% of the collections. And so I periodically send a letter of request down for advanced payments, and you're giving me permission to do that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I move we approve the resolution requesting the county auditor to make advance payments of taxes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Knighton. It has been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing, now, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is regarding fund transfers, advances, and advance returns. Again, Mr. Seymour, would you give us the board more details on this?
Yes, you're giving me authorization to transfer from fund to fund, or make an advance from one fund to another fund, provided at the next regular board meeting, I bring that for your approval. But I typically bring that for your approval before I ever do it. But the Ohio Revised Code states that you can have, go ahead and do it, and then get, bring it before the board, but I typically do it before I do it. And as you know, the only transfer historically we've made is from the general fund to student athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I make a motion authorizing the treasurer to make fund-to-fund advances, advance returns, and transfers as needed throughout the year with board ratification as part of the financial reports at the next regular board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, has been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? Okay, seeing, now, Mr. Seymour. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, is regarding the board member participation in employee benefits plan. Again, Mr. Seymour, would you provide detailed information?
It's totally acceptable for board members to participate in our health, life, and dental plans at the board's total cost, the board member's total cost. However, if the board member should choose to participate, they have to make that election at a public meeting. We're just making, putting it on record at our organizational meeting. Should one of you want to join our benefit program, we would have to bring it to the board and have it authorized by the board. So we're just making note of it now that should one member want to do it, we would bring it before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
So really, no vote is necessary. It's just a notation.
Thank you. Any questions? Next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is the fiscal officer of the student activity account. And I know that Mr. Smith is not with us today, so, Ms. Wilson, would you give the board, provide any details on this?
Well, Mr. Smith?
Want me to help out?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put it, Mr. Seymour, thank you.
That's okay. What we're basically asking is that the superintendent be made the office, the fiscal officer and the sign-off officer on all athletic and student activity accounts, and that the superintendent has the right to modify or change those budgets throughout the year. And once a year, we present them to the board, and you're going to see in the next motion the list of all those accounts. But each budget's been prepared, and it's been submitted to the superintendent for his signature, but we don't necessarily do each individual athletic or student activity account by the board. You do them as a fund in totality.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order for appointment to appoint the superintendent as the sign-off officer of all student activities?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to request appointment of the superintendent to be the sign-off officer of all student activities and activity programs, and these programs shall be presented to the board once each year. The superintendent will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budget throughout the year as warranted.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. It's been motioned in second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing, now, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is regarding athletic and student activity accounts. And, Mr. Seymour?
These are the student activity and athletic accounts that are currently functioning in the district, and this is the list for your approval of all those accounts that are attached.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to request authorization for the athletic and student activity accounts for the fiscal year 2024 and 2025, and the calendar year 2024 as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman, for second. It's been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions?
I have a question. Can somebody tell me what the PALS club is? High school and middle school? I guess that's a no.
I don't know, I'm sorry, but I can phone a friend and see if I can get a response before the end of the meeting.
No, I can just, somebody let me know in the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
I think I know what it is, but I don't want to speak incorrectly, so I'll wait till Courtney's in there.
I believe they were functioning last year, correct?
Yes.
I just don't have a recollection.
Yeah.
I could read through the list and know all the names of all the other ones, that's the one I just don't know off the top of my head.
It's an acronym, but I don't remember.
It's my clarification. It doesn't matter, he can email me or tell me the next minute. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 13.01, which is the authorization of the then and now certificate. Mr. Seymour, would you please provide?
Yes, according to Ohio Revised Code, you're giving me authority, occasionally, as you know, everything in a school district has to be purchased by purchase order, and it has to be submitted prior to the actual purchase. Occasionally, new people or somebody forgets, and they purchase something, and we get an invoice, and there's no purchase order in place. So you're basically, according to Ohio Revised Code, giving me permission that if the money was available then, and the funds are still available now, to go ahead and authorize that purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I move, per Ohio Revised Code 5705.41, that we request authorization for the treasurer to exercise the then and now certificate, certification of funds, provided the funds are within the board-approved appropriations and free of any previous encumbrances.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Knighton. It has been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing, now, Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 14.01, which is the authorization to modify appropriations. Again, Mr. Seymour, would you please give board more details on this?
Yes, the board is giving me permission to modify the original appropriations line item. As you know, you adopt the appropriations, and you're giving me permission to move from one line to another line, as long as I do not exceed the total authorized appropriation from the last board adopted appropriation measure, and that I never exceed the amount of resources available as certified by the Budget Commission that is either approved or amended by July 31st. And as you know, and, or you will know, in June, I always bring that final appropriations to you with the final certificate of resources from the Hamilton County Budget Commission, stating that all appropriations were within revenue resources.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
I make a motion requesting authorization for the treasurer to modify the original line item appropriations as set by the board. The treasurer shall not alter the total amended appropriations as adopted by the board. All modifications must be within the last board adopted appropriations measure. The treasurer shall stay within the funds available as certified by the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, or as amended and approved on or before June 30th by the Budget Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Knighton. It has been motioned. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is fifteen-point-zero-one, which is the recognition of support groups. So, Ms. Wilson?
Each...
Or Mr. Seymour?
I don't care.
Okay.
Each year, Mr. Smith would like the Board of Education to recognize those support groups that are that are recognized by the Board of Education that provide services and support the district. And these are the ones that all have their own tax ID number and their own four-oh-three-B status, and they do things that support our students in the district. And that would be the Athletic Boosters, Performing Arts Boosters, Winton Woods PTA, and the Winton Woods Educational Foundation, each one at which has submitted their budget or support documentation for your review. And they do that once each year.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Unless Courtney has something to add.
No, that that's accurate, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but I do have an answer for you with regard to the PALS account.
Oh, thank you.
It's basically the special, it's a special needs, it has to do with multiple handicap department.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, thank you.
Special ed department.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Board, a motion is in order? Is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion, the, to, for the recognized support groups, Athletic Boosters, Performing Arts Boosters, Winton Woods PTA, and Winton Woods Educational Foundation. Each of the support groups have provided the board with their twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budgets or reports for review.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Spielman. Are there any questions or discussions?
I do have a question. Um, is this list inclusive of of all the support groups, or do these have to apply? I just, I'm familiar with a couple others that do support the Winton Woods community, and so I don't know if there's like an application process that these have to go through, or do you know the answer to that?
These are just the groups that are recognized by the Board of Education. I don't, I'm not familiar if any others have asked the superintendent for, have four-oh-three-B status and all that.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking, they have to...
Yeah, and they, yeah.
Apply with the superintendent for that.
Yeah, and have a four-oh-three-B status and their own tax ID number and and their bylaws would, and the copy of their bylaws that support, you know, the... I'm not, you know, that's all I'm familiar with about it.
That's good to know. I just, I know that they're doing some good work for the students, and so if they don't have that, I'll encourage them to, you know, make sure that they...
Oh, okay.
So that they're recognized for the work that they're doing, yeah.
Okay.
And Ms. Wilson, did you have?
I was just going to add that part of the reason that this is important is because sometimes parents don't know the distinction between what is Winton Woods and what is a, what is a separate entity that that has different obligations and liabilities.
Yeah.
And so this is a nice way to say that they are a support group formally, but they are technically separate from Winton Woods.
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is sixteen-point-zero-one, which is the appointment of a purchasing agent. And, Mr. Seymour, or Ms. Wilson and Mr. Smith's absence, will one of you all?
Yes, here we're asking that the board to authorize Mr. Steve Denny, our Executive Director of Business Affairs, to serve as the superintendent's designated purchasing agent for the district on all purchases not exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand as per board policy. As you know, there's a whole different procurement process for construction, et cetera, over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The board would see all that as a separate vote. But items under that or not construction, you're appointing Mr. Denny to be the authorized purchasing agent as designated by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I move that we, for the authorization for Mr. Steve Denny, Executive Director of Business Affairs, to serve as the superintendent's designated purchasing agent for the district on all purchases not exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars as per board policy.
I'll second that motion. It has been motioned in second. Is there any questions or discussions?
Is that Ms. Bryant seconding?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions or seconds? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is seventeen-point-zero-one, which is the continuation of memberships in OSBA. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I'd like to request a motion to approve the continuation of the memberships and subscriptions for the following Ohio School Board Association, January through December twenty-twenty-four, subscription to the briefcase and the social, the school management news, January through December twenty-twenty-four, and participation in the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund, January through December twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Knighton. It's been motioned in second. Are there any questions or discussions? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is eighteen-point-zero-one, which is the Board Council Committee and Legislative... I can't speak today. Legislative Liaison Appointments. Say that very fast, so you know. So, so for the twenty-twenty-four board appointments, the Ohio School Board Association and National School Boards Association Legislative, Legis, I can't say that. Legislative Liaison. Dr. Johnson?
I accept the appointment.
Okay. Great Oaks Board of Education. So it looks like it's currently Mr. Bertie through twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five?
Excuse me, Mr. Smith did ask that the board consider naming someone that is currently on the board for that, that position.
Okay. Board, we would like to have a discussion, writing that as? Or are we okay with the appointment as seen?
Would, how, what's your appetite? Are you, are you, we okay with Mr. Bertie staying on there? If not, then...
We would have to pass a resolution now and do an appointment.
We'd have to do an appointment. We'd have to do that the next meeting, or we'd have to do that tonight?
I would have to check with the Great Oaks on that.
Okay. Can we table that one?
I don't know.
Um, I would say if we can table it and see.
Yeah, I guess we have to at this point in time, just to see what Great Oaks says.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, I'd say so.
Since their board appointment time runs a little bit differently than ours.
That's what I was going to say, mhm.
I think you're too late.
All right. Superintendent's Review and Evaluation Liaison?
So for now, we're just going to leave it currently, Mr. Bertie?
Correct.
Okay.
Until further, just until we get clarification from Great Oaks.
Isn't their vote like in October, November, something like that? Don't they change over November, October?
Yeah.
We would have to pass a resolution, I know that, but I don't know the timing, that's all.
Got you, I don't have a timing.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, and thank you, Ms. Wilson. On the Superintendent's Review and Evaluation Liaison, Mr. Brandon Smith and Ms. Bryant?
Okay.
You accept your nominee?
Yes.
I do too, as well. Treasurer's Review and Evaluation Liaison? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Brandon Smith?
Mm-hmm.
And myself, I do. Board Member Handbook, where I need of a liaison. Anyone interested?
Can you tell me a little bit more?
I guess I could pick it back up if you'd like to work with it, with me on it, Angela?
Sure, okay.
Okay, yeah, so you can put...
Dr. Johnson and Ms. Knighton, thank you. And it is just working on the board.
Dr. Johnson and Mrs. Knighton then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. OSBA Urban School District Advisory Network Liaison?
I think I have done that in the past. We just didn't go to any of the, you know, like their yearly meeting, their annual conference or whatever, but...
Are you nominating yourself? I think you're nominating yourself, Dr. Johnson.
Brandon, do you want to do that?
Dr. Johnson, if you don't want to, I can, I can take it up.
How about we do a split, so if you can't, I will?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, all right. So if I put his name first?
No, I was about to say, we'll put Dr. Johnson's name first.
I think, Dr. Johnson, I have you first and then just...
I think that's a wonderful idea. I second that.
Wow. How did I walk into that one?
He spoke up. And the OSBA legislation, legisla, okay, so we've got to do that. Yep, that's to you as well, okay. Public Records Designee? Mr. Seymour? And we have our municipality representatives, and I know that last year, we had difficulty getting in touch with the municipality. So if you are listening, please invite us to your meetings. We'd love to come and be a support. Um, so this year, it looks like Forest Park, myself and Dr. Johnson. Green Hills, Mr. Spielman and Ms. Knighton?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, Springfield Township, myself and Mr. Smith, Brandon Smith?
Sure, mhm, yes.
Great. Superintendent Committee Liaisons for Student Achievement, myself and Dr. Johnson?
Good.
Community Engagement, myself and Mr. Smith?
Yes.
That, that's the end of them.
Uh, I think we want to keep the other ones. We've always had Community Engagement.
I think Mr. Smith asked, we could do that at the next board meeting, but I think there's new legislation around it.
Oh.
Around Community Engagement?
Community Engagement, Financial Advisory Policy?
Okay. So Financial Policy and Athletic Performing Arts, are there new? Or is it just Community Engagement and Financial Advisory?
All the other committees. We can check with him.
That's the legislation around the minutes and agendas that are required for those committees.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we going to table the superintendent?
Table it until next meeting?
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, if we, if we could, till Mr. Smith's available, because I believe he was going to just keep the superintendent liaison for Student Achievement.
Okay.
And I believe he's going to bring to the board, regular board meetings, the minutes under Superintendent Updates from those committee meetings. There's new rules and regulations around Superintendent Committees.
Okay.
And I think we just want to make sure where he stands on those. Last I heard, that the only one was going to be the Superintendent Committee for Student Achievement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Question, on the student Superintendent Committee Liaison for Student Achievement, is that the SAC Technology Committee? I'm presently on that.
So you're on it, you were on it as a community member?
I was on it as a community member.
And you're interested in continuing as a board member?
Yes.
We'll have to check, I don't know if three people can do it.
Three people can't.
We can't.
So I was just asking if I could fill in, take, take one of you, take one of your positions on that. Since I'm already, I've already been on it for...
And I have too.
For two years.
Mr. Spielman, you can have my spot.
You're not even on there.
You're not on it.
Thank you for volunteering.
Do you want to share their responsibility, Mr. Spielman?
I was going to go to say, I've done it for eleven years, so if somebody else wants it, I can take it.
Yeah, I would, I would like to be on it.
Okay.
I've been, I've made every meeting since January twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay.
Very interesting.
Can we have an alternative person? So like if I can't make it, Dr. Johnson, you can be there?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. If I'm traveling. Perfect.
So that's Ms. Bryant and Mr. Spielman then?
Yes.
And Dr. Johnson. We'll alternate, like if I'm not out of town for work.
I don't think we should list three.
Well, just list those two, but then you'll just let me know, and then I'll fill in for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being flexible.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a similar question about the municipality representatives?
Yes.
Just because I live in Springfield Township?
You sure can.
Do either of those people?
You, you sure can. Yeah, you would probably have an in-roll. One of the things... Yeah, I would be happy for you to be the representative for Springfield Township.
Ah, okay.
So, does that mean, Mrs. Bryant, you're going to Green Hills and Mrs. Knighton is going to Springfield?
Sure.
We can switch.
You get that, Mr. Seymour?
Not at all. Not at all. Not at all.
Since I only have that one committee appointment other than Green Hills, can I volunteer for the Great Oaks Board of Education?
We have to find out if we are able to change that, but we'll definitely, yeah, thank you for that.
Brandon's already voting for you.
So is Green Hills still Mr. Spielman and Ms. Knighton?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll read through them. So, so municipality represent, uh, representatives for Forest Park, myself and Dr. Johnson. For Green Hills, it will be Mr. Spielman and myself.
Okay.
For Springfield Township, it'll be Ms. Knighton and Mr. Smith.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for that discussion. All right. Any other questions or discussions regarding our twenty-twenty-four board appointments?